This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening and welcome to the January 2, 2024 South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners meeting. I'm going to call this meeting to order. I ask you all to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd like to announce that all public sessions of the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners are electronically recorded, filed, and posted to the township website for public access. At this time, I will ask our township manager, Tom Petrucci, to review our public virtual meeting rules.
Thank you. The public virtual meeting rules are as follows. Courtesy of the floor for non-agenda items will be at the beginning and end of the agenda. Public comment will be limited to five minutes per speaker. For all listed agenda items, the board president will call for courtesy of the floor prior to the Board of Commissioners taking action on that specific agenda item. For in-person attendees, please raise your hand to be recognized, then move to the podium when directed. You will be asked to state your name and address for the record, and may then proceed with asking your question. For those participating virtually, please mute your microphone or telephone to avoid any background noise that may cause interference during the meeting. The chat box feature will be active throughout the meeting. If you have a comment or question, please type your full name and address into the chat box. The staff member monitoring GoToMeeting will then unmute your microphone, and you will have the opportunity to comment or ask a question. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. I do not have any executive sessions to announce to the public this evening. Moving on to Agenda Item 4. Tonight, we have the installation of our elected officials. We are very grateful and thankful to have the Honorable Judge Anna Kristi Marx joining us this evening to administer the oath to our Commissioners-elect. So Anna Kristi, if you'd please come up to the podium. And we will be swearing in this evening Commissioners Diane Kelly, myself, Commissioner Jacob Roth, and Commissioner Thomas Johns. Okay. Then, repeat after me. I, Diane Kelly, do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, the ordinances of the Township of South Whitehall, the ordinances of the Township of South Whitehall, and that I will discharge the duties I will discharge the duties of Commissioner in South Whitehall Township, Lehigh County, South Whitehall Township, Lehigh, with fidelity. Congratulations. Just wanted to take a moment to briefly thank our community for giving me another opportunity to serve. I'm just finishing my first term, very excited to begin my second term as an elected official here in South Whitehall. So thank you for your trust in me, and it is certainly my honor and privilege to work with a very professional management team and staff in South Whitehall Township to deliver the best services and air for our community. So thank you all. All right. Please repeat after me. I, Jacob D. Roth
I, Jacob D. Roth
do solemnly swear
do solemnly swear
that I will support, obey, and defend
that I will support, obey, and defend
the Constitution of the United States of America
the Constitution of the United States of America
the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania
the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania
the ordinances of the Township of South Whitehall
the ordinances of the Township of South Whitehall
and that I will discharge the duties
and that I will discharge the duties
of Commissioner in South Whitehall Township, Lehigh County
of Commissioner of South Whitehall Township, Lehigh County
with fidelity.
with fidelity.
Congratulations.
I'll try to keep my comments as brief as Diane's, but I do have a lot of thank yous to hand out tonight. First, to my wonderful family, all of you, for being here, and those of you who are joining us virtually, for all your love and support for my entire life, but especially over the past year. When you run a campaign for local government and you have a decent-sized family, you also get the best team of campaign volunteers one could ever ask for. To Natalie for all her love and her support and her guidance. Anybody that knows Natalie even a little bit knows that she's probably a much better politician than I am, and always gives very candid and very honest and excellent advice. So, thank you. To my fellow Commissioners, to Diane for all of her hard work over the past few years, and for bringing back professionalism and decorum to this board two years ago when she was elected Board President when it was needed the most. To Monica for being not only the most effective advocate for the people of this township, but for also being the kindest human being I think I will ever know. To Tommy, I am so thrilled for the opportunity to work with you. We've only known each other a couple of weeks, but I know we're going to get along great, and we're going to do a lot of great things together, and I look forward to learning from you and your experience, not only throughout your career, but as a previous Township Commissioner as well. So, welcome to our team, and we're excited that you're here. To the entire South Whitehall Township staff, led by a few extraordinary individuals, in our manager, Tom Petrucci, our Director of Operations, Herb Bender, and of course Chief Glenn Dorney. This entire team is probably the best municipal government staff in the region. All of our department heads, all of our employees, the entire police department, the entire volunteer fire companies, our Public Works Department, everybody. They are an excellent team, and I will always be here to support them, and I will always have their back, and you will always, for me anyway, and from the rest of our board, be given the opportunity to pursue your professional goals and your professional passions. To our Solicitor, Jennifer Aldifer, our Assistant Solicitor, and Tony Talarida, and all of our professional service firms for the invaluable advice and guidance that they provide to us. There's three other gentlemen who couldn't be here tonight, but who I wanted to thank for their mentorship and their friendship, and that's former Commissioners Mike Walk, Brad Osborne, and David Kennedy. And lastly, to all the residents of this township. There's just a lot of great things about South Whitehall Township, but the one that I've really come to love over the past year, as I've been out knocking on doors and talking to people, is the sense of community here. And it's not just township-wide. It's found in our schools, our religious institutions, our historic villages, neighborhoods, volunteer organizations. People really care about each other here. They look after their neighbors, and they have an immense amount of respect for one another, for our community institutions, for first responders, and it's really wonderful. The sort of, you know, small-town values that are sometimes hard to find nowadays are alive and well here in South Whitehall, even as we grow and as we change and as people move into the township. Whether your family's lived here for one year or 100 years, I've found that our residents really demonstrate the best of those values. So, again, I want to thank everyone for being here tonight. It's an exciting meeting. It's always an exciting meeting as we welcome our new officers and swearing our new Commissioners, and thank you for coming out.
I, Thomas Tommy J. Johns
I, Thomas Tommy J. Johns
do solemnly swear
do solemnly swear
that I will support, obey, and defend
I will support, obey, and defend
the Constitution of the United States of America
the Constitution of the United States of America
the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania
the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania
the ordinances of the Township of South Whitehall
the ordinance of the township
and that I will discharge the duties
I will discharge the duties
of Commissioner in South Whitehall Township, Lehigh County
of Commissioner of South Whitehall Lehigh County
with fidelity.
with fidelity.
Congratulations.
I want to thank my wife for supporting me throughout this campaign. I don't know many of these. No, I became disabled about 10 years ago, and she said it's going to affect me physically, but it won't affect me mentally with my mind. So she gave me the support to just keep running and using my mind as she wanted me to. So I, second of all, I want to thank the residents of South Whitehall Township for having their trust and faith in me to run again, and I'm looking forward to working with the new board, with the board behind me. I think we're going to have a good team, and I think I'm going to have no problems with anybody, I hope. And I also, I'm looking forward to working with the township people as well as the Commissioners. So I'd like to thank everybody again. Thank you.
Thank you all for your patience. Moving on on our agenda to Agenda Item 5. It's an exciting night in the township. We are going to have a badge-pinning ceremony this evening for our South Whitehall Township Police Department, and I will turn it over to our Police Chief Glenn Dorney to present.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Kelly. I want to thank everybody in the audience tonight. This is a special night for the South Whitehall Township, specifically the Police Department. This is a great opportunity for us. This is the first time we will be fully staffed in about three years. So we're here. We're very happy to welcome the six newest officers on the department. I know many of you are friends and family, so thank you for being part of this. I want to welcome you to the South Whitehall Township Police Department family as well. So we will get going, so please bear with me. We do have a lot to read through. So we will go one at a time. If we would like to start with Officer Nathan Peterson, if you and your family could come to the front, and Captain and Lieutenants, if you could come up and give them a hand with what they need. And Father Ken Peterson, are you coming up? All right. All right. Officer Nathan Peterson is a 2016 graduate of the Stroudsburg High School and a 2022 graduate from East Stroudsburg University, earning a Bachelor of Science degree in criminal justice. From 2017 until 2023, Officer Peterson served as an infantryman in the Army National Guard, obtaining the rank of Specialist. Officer Peterson recently graduated with the 112th class at the Allentown Police Academy. When asked why he chose a career in law enforcement and why he chose the South Whitehall Township Police Department, his response was, quote, "Following my six-year contract in the National Guard, I wanted to continue to protect and serve the local community. The South Whitehall Township Police Department's values align with my own personal values and beliefs. Throughout the hiring process, this department went above and beyond preparing me for the police academy." So with that, I would like to welcome Father to pin badge 189 on Officer Peterson. Without drawing any blood. Next, if Officer Noel Brousse and family would come forward. Officer Noel Brousse is a 2016 graduate of Parkland High School, a 2020 graduate from the University of Connecticut, earning a Bachelor of Science degree in sports management, and a 2021 graduate from the California University of Pennsylvania, earning a Master of Science degree in sports management with a concentration in intercollegiate athletic administration. Officer Brousse recently graduated with the 112th class at the Allentown Police Academy. When asked why he chose a career in law enforcement and why he chose the South Whitehall Police Department, his response was, quote, "If I couldn't play in the NFL," which he almost did, "I wanted to pursue something bigger than myself. Being a left tackle throughout my football-playing career, I had a natural tendency to protect others, and found a career in law enforcement to be a perfect opportunity to do just that. Being a Parkland High School alum and being raised on these same grounds throughout most of my life inspired me to choose to work for the South Whitehall Township Police Department and serve and protect the citizens of South Whitehall Township." So with that, if Mom Diane Brousse could come forward and pin badge 190 on Noel. And also, if you don't know, there's, I could read about 20 more minutes' worth of all of his collegiate athletic accomplishments. We almost lost him to the CFL like a week before he got hired by us, too, and he's been through the combine with the NFL. So, funny fact, he lost almost another person in the academy. He was much larger than what he is now, but the academy worked that off him in his own dedication to make sure that he was in position to meet all those requirements. He's excelled. So, congratulations, Noel and family. If Officer Zachary Foster and family could come forward. Officer Zachary Foster is a 2018 graduate of Amas High School and 2023 graduate from the Pennsylvania State University, earning a Bachelor of Arts degree in criminology. Since 2018, Officer Foster has served as a motor transport operator in the United States Marine Corps and is currently a corporal. Officer Foster recently graduated with the 112th class at the Allentown Police Academy. When asked why he chose a career in law enforcement and why he chose the South Whitehall Township Police Department, his response was, quote, "My passion for helping others was emboldened by my service in the Marine Corps. Additionally, my older brother, who is also a police officer, set forth an excellent example for me to follow and gave me a great insight to the lifestyle of policing. I chose the South Whitehall Township Police Department because it felt the most at home compared to surrounding area departments. The staff throughout this entire hiring process was extremely respectful, honest, and more critically thinking than other departments I applied to." So with that, Father Christopher Foster, if you could please come forward and badge, or pin badge 191 on your son. We're halfway there. If Officer Kelly Quilty and family could come forward. Officer Kelly Quilty is a 2010 graduate of Kings Christian High School, which is in California. From 2010 and 2018, he served as a hospital corpsman in the United States Navy, obtaining the rank of Petty Officer III Class. Officer Quilty graduated from the Tulare Kings County Police Academy in 2019. After graduating from the Police Academy, Officer Quilty served as a patrol officer and school resource officer within the Hanford Police Department in California from 2019 until 2023. When asked why he chose a career in law enforcement and why he chose the South Whitehall Township Police Department, his response was, quote, "I wanted to continue serving after the Navy and wanted to serve my community. The chief and administration, along with all other officers, were very personable and welcoming. From my questioning to transferring from California to helping me to figure out and moving my family, the South Whitehall Township Police Department has been supportive on every step." So with that, Wife Lexie, and if Daughter Ryan could help, badge, pin badge 192. If Officer Trent Garland and family could come forward. Officer Trent Garland is a 2018 graduate of Lancaster Menonite School, Hershey Campus, and a 2022 graduate from Coates Town University, earning a Bachelor of Science in secondary education English. Officer Garland recently graduated with the 2023-02 class at the Reading Police Academy. When asked why he chose a career in law enforcement and why he chose the South Whitehall Township Police Department, his response was, quote, "I was interested in law enforcement throughout my high school and college career, but taught high school for a year after earning my Bachelor's degree. While teaching, I realized I still felt a pull toward the police force and decided to take the leap. I'm looking forward to a career that allows me to work closely with the community, encounter new and unpredictable challenges every day, and affect real change in the people I encounter. My personal values of professionalism and community engagement align with those of the South Whitehall Township Police Department. I'm excited about the opportunity to walk around the neighborhoods I patrol and build relationships with the people I serve rather than simply reacting to crime." So with that, Mom Melanie Hudson, if you could come forward and pin badge 193 on your son. Had to make sure the chief from the Reading Police Department was not here. We stole him from Reading last week. So, all right, last but certainly not least, Officer Abby Miller, if you could come forward with your family. Officer Abby Miller is a 2020 graduate of Fleetwood Area High School. She is currently majoring in criminal justice at Alvernia University and will earn a Bachelor's degree in May of 2024. Officer Miller recently graduated with the 2023-02 class at the Reading Police Academy. When asked why she chose a career in law enforcement and why she chose the South Whitehall Township Police Department, her response was, quote, "I wanted a career that would keep me on my feet and allow me to continue learning while on the job. In my opinion, a career would be, this career would be challenging and rewarding, and as a law enforcement officer, I believe it will be just that. I chose South Whitehall Township Police Department because of the community-oriented mindset and the opportunities to learn and grow that the department offers." So with that, Mom Shelley Heller, if you could pin badge 194 on your daughter. Thank you again for all the friends, family, and fellow officers who attended tonight for this special occasion. It's a great opportunity for us as an administration to see our future officers come and see what the future holds for them. And for the friends and family, know that we are here to support them. The township is a great organization that supports their law enforcement, the Police Department, and they're in good hands, and we will make sure that they're held accountable as they hold us accountable as well. So, thank you very much, and have a great evening if you don't want to stay for the rest of the meeting, which I recommend.
Thank you, Chief Dorney. I want to officially welcome Officers Peterson, Brousse, Foster, Quilty, Garland, and Miller to our South Whitehall Township Police Department family. We're very grateful for your service. We look forward to working with you as you serve our community. And we're very thankful that you chose South Whitehall. It is one of the finest law enforcement agencies in Lehigh County. Welcome, and we look forward to getting to know you all better. Congratulations and be safe. Moving on in our agenda, we're at Agenda Item Number Six. At this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to our Solicitor Attorney Jennifer Aldifer to proceed with the reorganization of our board.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. Happy New Year to everyone that's left. Congratulations to the newest officers and congratulations to you commissioners as well. Your first official order of business is to elect your officers to serve on the board for the remainder of the year and until a successor is appointed. So at this time, I'm going to open the floor to the board for nominations for a person to serve as president of the board.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Commissioner Diane Kelly as town, as Commissioner President.
I will second.
Okay, and I'll call for a vote at this point. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Congratulations, Commissioner Kelly.
Thank you, Attorney Aldifer, and thank you to my board members. I appreciate your confidence and I look forward to working with you and sharing this board as we move forward.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Commissioner Kelly then to proceed with the election of the remainder of the officers.
Thank you very much. Moving on to nominations for Vice President of the Board.
I would like to nominate Monica Hodges.
I'll second that. All for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Congratulations, Commissioner Hodges. Moving on to Agenda Item C, we need a motion to nominate Assistant Township Secretary. Do I hear a motion? I'll second that motion. All in favor of Jacob Roth for Township Secretary Assistant, excuse me? Motion says aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Congratulations. Resolution D, I need a resolution. I'm sorry. This is a motion to approve said resolution reappointing Tricia Dickert as Township Secretary. And I'll ask our Township Manager to present.
Thank you. Traditionally in South Whitehall Township, the Township Director of Finance has served as the Township Secretary. With that, Tricia Dickert has been the secretary since this past year. I would seek a motion to reappoint Tricia Dickert, Finance Director, as Township Secretary.
Very good. Is there any board discussion on this agenda item? Any public comment? I have a motion to reappoint Tricia Dickert as Township Secretary. So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. And Item 6E, we have a resolution reappointing our Township Treasurer, Herb Bender. Tom, do you have any comments?
Just that Mr. Bender does an excellent job, as he always does, with all positions.
Excellent, I would agree. Do I have a motion to approve said resolution reappointing Herb Bender as Township Treasurer? So moved. Second, is there any discussion of the board? Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Agenda Item F, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South Whitehall Township, Lehigh County, Pennsylvania, reappointing Thomas R. Petrucci as Township Manager. Do I have a motion to approve said resolution?
So moved.
I'll second. All, is there any discussion of the board? Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Tom, I want to just thank you for your leadership of the board in this township. And we very much look forward to you continuing in that role. And thank you for the leadership you provide.
Thank you. I look forward to continuing with the Board of Commissioners as well as all of staff and administration. Thank you for this opportunity.
Absolutely, it's our pleasure. And Item G, we have a resolution reappointing David C. Torry to the South Whitehall Township Vacancy Board. Is there any discussion on this agenda item? Do I have a motion to approve? Moved. Motion is second, any further discussion? Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Four to zero, motion passes. And Item H, we have a resolution to extend all professional service firms to serve at the pleasure of the Board of Commissioners for an unspecified contract term. Tom, if you would present this agenda item.
Thank you. So this resolution could be taken all as one or the approval of it, if the board is so inclined. It includes the Township Solicitor, which is Joseph A. Zader, Zader Law Offices, the alternate Township Solicitor, James Brockle from Brockle and DeVito, Civil Service Commission Solicitor is Eckert Siemens, Pension Committee Solicitor is also Eckert Siemens, Labor Council is Eckert Siemens, Building Code Appeals Board Solicitor is Lawrence B. Fox Esquire, Township Tax Appeal Hearing Officer Lawrence B. Fox Esquire, Township Engineer, the Pittcock Company, Alternate Township Engineer, Keystone Consulting Engineers, Sewage Enforcement Officer, Keystone Consulting Engineers, Geo-Technical Engineer, Hanover Engineering, Alternate Sewage Enforcement Officer, Hanover Engineering, Utility Engineer, Spot Stevens and McCoy, Third Party Residential Inspector Barry Isit and Associates, Third Party Commercial Inspector, Keycodes Inspection Agency. So some of the above listed have, you know, relevant fee increases, some do not. If there are any questions about any of the reappointments, we could certainly entertain those questions. Otherwise, I would seek a motion to approve as one, one action.
Thank you, Tom. The information has been distributed to the board in your agenda packet, including any changes to any of these professional service firms. Do I hear a motion to approve the resolutions as set forth by Township Manager?
Second.
Motion is second, is there any discussion of the board? Any public comment? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you, Tom. And Item I, we have a resolution reappointing Laura Harrier as South Whitehall Township Zoning Officer. Tom, do you have any comment?
I do not.
Okay, very good. We have a motion before us, so I have a motion to approve said resolution reappointing Laura M. Harrier as zoning officer. I'm moved.
Second.
Motion is second, is there any board discussion? Public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. We have a resolution appointing Thomas Harper as South Whitehall Township Alternate Zoning Officer. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll make, second, motion is second, is there any board discussion? Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Agenda Item K, we have a resolution reappointing John France as the Primary Building Code Official and Code Enforcement Officer of South Whitehall Township. Do I hear a motion? Motion is second, is there any board discussion? Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. And Item L, we have a resolution appointing Laura M. Harrier as Alternate Building Code Official and Code Enforcement Officer of South Whitehall Township. Do I have a motion to approve? I'm moved. Second, is there any board discussion? Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. And Item M, we have a resolution reappointing Thomas Harper as the Code Enforcement Officer for South Whitehall Township. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second, is there any board discussion? Public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. We have no ordinances this evening. Moving on to Agenda Item 8A, we have a resolution, amending Resolution Number 2023-01 Designating Depositories for Township Funds. Do you have anything to present?
Only that, the depositories are as exactly as had remained in effect for '23. We have not added any additional ones.
No changes, very good. Do I have a motion to approve said resolution?
So moved.
I'll second. Motion is second, is there any board discussion? Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. 8B, we have a resolution to amend the fee schedule for administrative fees, non-residential building fees, non-residential electrical fees, non-residential plumbing fees, residential building fees, residential electrical fees, residential plumbing fees, other permit fees, public works fees, police department fees, subdivision or land development fees, non-subdivision or land development fees, and to provide for a general repealer, severability clause, an effective date. Tom, do you have anything to add on this one?
Just that the substantive changes to the fee schedule include an amendment to the recreation fees, or I should say, the fees in lieu of open space dedication. The township has undergone a process by which to confirm those fees as required by the municipality's planning code by way of the adoption of the revised Parks, Recreation, Open Space, and Trails Plan. So all the information justifying the increase to the fees in lieu are set forth in the, in the open space plan. Also, another change is reconciled within the, for public works. The township has switched to using the FEMA rates to justify the use of public works personnel. So in order to make sure we're recouping all of our associated costs with equipment and personnel. Other than that, there's no major changes other than just ensuring that where there's a wage increase, that we've captured that, for example, with the overtime rate for police.
Very good. And the fees in lieu of open space was discussed at length at our last meeting.
Correct, as well as reviewed by the Park and Recreation Board.
Very good, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve said resolution amending the township fee schedule?
So moved.
I'll second. Is there any board discussion on this agenda item? Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. And Item 8C, we have a resolution establishing the manner of compensation for zoning hearing board solicitor for the township of South Whitehall. Do you have anything to add, Tom?
Just that, the fees did not change from '23 to '24 for this particular item.
Very good. Do I have a motion to approve said resolution establishing manner of compensation for the zoning hearing board solicitor? Do you make a motion?
Second.
Motion is second, is there any board discussion? Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Agenda Item 8D, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South Whitehall Township, Lehigh County, Pennsylvania, authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement with SCS engineers for the development of a South Whitehall Township Solid Waste Recycling Program Evaluation and Routing Study. Tom, if you'd present that agenda.
Thank you. So the Board of Commissioners previously directed management to evaluate the overall solid waste recycling and yard waste program, which would include the following: An independent evaluation of alternative solid waste recycling and yard waste programs; The review by way of an independent analysis of the optimization of the solid waste recycling collection system method, including collection days, collection routes, waste and recycling route workload tonnages, and the various time metrics associated with collection, travel, units per day, and non-service time. Also, to look at ways of discussing the educational and increasing the educational awareness of solid waste and recycling program alternatives. In the interim time period, a scope of work was developed with SCS engineers, which is a firm that specializes in solid waste environmental assessment, assessments. The scope of work cost would be $70,900. The township has sufficiently provided for the commencement of this study within the '24 budget. So township staff is respectfully asking to approve this resolution tonight so that we can begin immediately working to effectuate this, this study.
Excellent, thank you, Tom. Do I have a motion to approve said resolution? I'll second, is there any board discussion? Any public comment? All, I'm sorry, Commissioner Hodges?
I just wanted to make a comment. I was looking at the schedule for Tasks 1 and 2, and I noticed that they will be completed rather quickly. I may, so.
That's the hope and the intent, I should say, I'm sorry.
So yeah, thank you. I'm glad we'll have some information, some data collected by then, pretty quick. So thank you.
Good point, thank you. Any other comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. And Item 8E, we have a resolution authorizing the President of the Board of Commissioners to sign the Lehigh County Regional Traffic Safety Program Grant. Tom, do you have any comment on this? Or is it Chief Dorney?
Yeah, this is just a process that I believe you've already taken care of most of this through a previous resolution. The PTS grant covers 14 municipal police departments, including the city of Allentown. The grant will cover DUI enforcement, aggressive driving, occupant protection, and pedestrian safety. Its proposal requests funding through the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation to implement sustained DUI enforcement, reduce aggressive driving, increase pedestrian safety, and increase seatbelt and child restraint use activities for a 36-month period. It will start and has started October 1st, 2023, and will end September 30th of 2026. And the total amount for that would be $772,218.28. And this is money that's essentially a pass-through, not a match. This is funding that, we are the fiduciary, that we receive all the funding through PennDOT and reimburse the municipalities that hire and work the overtime assignments as well as us. So it's a very effective program,